Good afternoon, folks. I'm your president, Councilwoman. Representative number 6000, District. Chairperson for the Council on Community Development Committee. Good afternoon. We will hear the following bills. Twenty two dash zero nine four R. Twenty two dash zero nine nine R. Twenty two zero one nine seven. And twenty two zero two oh two. Just for reference, Bill number twenty two oh one eight eight. The rezoning of thirty one oh one to thirty one thirteen Eastern Avenue was canceled. And yesterday, I rescheduled it for June twenty first at 2:00 P. M. In attendance today, we have members of the committee. John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Brian Dorsey of the Third District.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And other council members present because of sponsorship of a bill. We have Councilmember James Torrance of the Seventh District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And members of the Office of the President. We have Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs. And representing the Office of the Mayor, we have Natasha Miho, Director of Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And before I begin, I would like to remind everyone that if you are not speaking, please, well, that one is, when we were virtual. But the main thing is, when you're recognized, please identify yourself and the agency or organization that you represent. And once you finish speaking, please have a seat and be prepared for any questions from the committee. So let's begin with Council Resolution twenty two dash zero zero nine four R. Approval for the exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license for use at eighteen oh seven to eighteen eleven Baker Street, two one two one seven. For the purpose of providing the required approval to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for use at eighteen oh seven to eighteen eleven Baker Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two one seven, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their license for a Class A seven beer, wine, and liquor license. This resolution was introduced on February twenty second, twenty twenty-two. This bill was sponsored by Councilman Torrance. And Councilman Torrance, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill has been sponsored on behalf of the Kim family, who are the current owners of the property. They have written support from the community association and associated members. And this is them exchanging their license. Present is Mr. Kim himself to speak on behalf of the actual ownership.
Thank you. Do committee members have any questions for Councilman Torrance? Hearing none, the committee will now take reports from the agency representatives. And we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office. Any representative?
Natasha. Madam Chair, I don't see the Solicitor's Office present at the moment, but we do have a bill report for them that did approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And then we'll go with the Board of Liquor Licensing Commissioner, Nicholas Splendy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nicholas Splendy, Deputy Executive Secretary of the Board of Liquor License Commissioners. We stand by our report and happy to answer any questions about the alcoholic beverages article if the committee has any questions.
Thank you. And the Police Department Representative, Shannon Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report and have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. And Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Madam Chair, we stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Health Department.
Hi, Madam Chair. My name is Celeste Davis. I serve as the Chief Health Policy Officer at the Health Department, and we also stand by our report. No position.
Thank you, Celeste. And the Finance Department, Mara James.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Assistant Budget Director. We stand by our report and do not object.
Thank you. Okay, the committee will now take, are there any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The councilman pointed out, and it's very important, there is a sunset in this legislation. Twelve dash nine oh two point one of the alcoholic beverages article authorizes this particular process. That bill is set to sunset on June the thirtieth of this year, which, just so everyone understands, all applications have to be processed and issued by this agent, my agency, which means any, there is an affirmative step that must occur if the council approves, and that is the licensee must physically fill out an application and bring it to our office. So for all licensees and for the public and the council members to know, we have to be in receipt of all of those and have physically processed them all by June the thirtieth because that is the sunset date in the legislation. Whether the General Assembly decides to reauthorize it is a question for next session. But for the process, purposes of all the ones before you and in the hopper right now, they have to be finished second reader before then, and the licensee still has to take the affirmative step of bringing their license and application to us. But with that, that is my only comment. And thank you, Councilmember Stokes, for reminding me to notify the committee.
Thank you. And just as a note from your comment, June thirtieth is the deadline. And I think I do have at least one more that's going to be scheduled June fourteenth, which is Councilmember Stokes. And that will definitely go through the process and meet the deadline. I see Council, Councilmember Dorsey's hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've sat in a lot of these hearings, but I don't have any of these that have come through my district. Can you just remind me? Or else what?
Or else it stays a BD seven. If you don't exchange a BD seven, it remains a BD seven. That is the license that all the licensees hold. So there would only be the requirements of a BD seven and all of, you know, the privileges of a BD seven. But you could not exchange it to an A seven unless you complete the process. And so to follow up on that, if there is something in the hopper, and I think we've advised the council member who has the one that's being scheduled for later, a later hearing, we will accept the exchange information from the licensees who have pending resolutions from council people, and we will hold it and wait for the council to approve so that they don't have to worry and scramble. We'll hold that application pending resolution approval. So I know that, I believe we've advised the councilman from the Twelfth of that for his specific licensee. But to answer Councilman Dorsey's question, the or else is, we are legally prohibited from exchanging BD sevens to A sevens until the General Assembly, if they decide to reauthorize or extend the sunset date. It will be out of our hands, and BD sevens will remain BD sevens if they're not processed.
I just don't even remember why you would have to or why you would want to exchange a BD seven for an A seven.
Oh, I, the, so a BD seven is a tavern, which requires a tavern to be open and operating anytime any alcohol sale is occurring. So from our perspective, a BD seven is a both, it is requirement to offer both on and off premises sale. So you cannot say, the tavern's closed right now, but I'll sell you some beer or some wine or some liquor to go. If your tavern's not open, you're not open. You cannot say, oh, the tavern's closed right for now. And our inspectors, a letter went out to BD sevens to remind them of this rule and this requirement at renewal because during COVID, with mayor's executive orders and governor's executive orders, for health reasons, asking people to not congregate, that rule was not enforced for public health reasons. But now that those executive orders have ended, if you have a BD seven tavern, you must be open and operating. So an A seven is not required to have a tavern. In fact, it is illegal to consume alcohol on premises in a Class A license, including a Class A seven. And so the hours change. BD sevens can be open six A. M. to two A. M., Monday to Sunday. A sevens are, unless there's other restrictions, we don't have to get into right now, ten A. M. to midnight, Monday to Sunday. And A, Class A licenses also have to provide video surveillance systems as required by state law as well.
Thank you.
And you don't, don't feel slighted, Councilman Dorsey. I haven't had any of these as well.
I certainly would not.
Counselmember Stokes.
Real quick, this is for Mr. Splendy. Now, am I correct, and I just want to, from my understanding, when you have a B seven license, you can't use your packaged sales as your sales when you're not opening up your, let's say you're the back of the building, not the building, but inside the building for people to sit at the bar, right?
It is correct, Councilman, that you cannot sell packaged goods without offering sales on premises. You cannot say, the bar is closed, but I'll sell you to go. That is a violation of the BD seven. You're correct, sir.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I have one other question.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Just as a follow-up for that, and as a reminder, clarification. There's a difference between the tavern being open and the door being unlocked, right? Like, a tavern technically, legally, can be considered open, but only to, like, special access, right? Like, I've had cases where I was told the tavern was technically open, even if you had to, like, knock on the door and be, like, wait to be let in, as opposed to the door being unlocked and be able to freely walk in.
So without getting into the fire department's wheelhouse, from an alcoholic beverages article, a premises can be defined in many different ways. And as long as you can be served on premises and off premises during the hours of operation and not denied the ability to consume alcohol on premises, if that is your wish, then you are in compliance with the BD seven requirements. I cannot speak to whether it violates the Building Fire and Related Code or the Fire Marshal's rulings. That's for them.
Yeah, because we do have some places where unless you knew that there was a tavern inside, there would be nothing on the exterior of the building that might indicate to you that there actually is a tavern inside. You might have absolutely no idea.
Some of these licenses go back to nineteen thirty-three, and they precede the current fire codes. So that sounds completely plausible to me.
Thank you.
And just want to make note that Member of the Committee, Councilman Mark Conway, will be joining us a little later. He's in a important meeting at this time. Also want to make note that the owner of the facility is here but doesn't wish to speak. I didn't know, Councilman, if you just wanted to recognize his name for matter of record.
Yes, I just want to recognize the name for matter of record, and he's also here for any questions that you have, any.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And we're gonna just make sure you sign in as well. She's gonna bring the sheet down to you. And, okay, there's no amendments to consider for this bill. Any other questions from the committee? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilwoman Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Conway is absent for this bill. Councilman Glover is absent. Councilwoman Ramos.
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilmember Stokes.
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill will move favorable at the next council meeting. Thank you. Moving on to the next bill, number twenty two dash zero zero nine nine R. Approval for the exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license for the use of twenty, for the use at twenty three oh one East Biddle Street for the purpose of providing the required approval and under Maryland Code twelve dash nine oh two one to allow for license holder, holding a valid Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for the use at twenty three oh one East Biddle Street, Baltimore, Maryland, two one two one three, to apply to the Board of Liquor License. This bill was introduced on March twenty first, twenty twenty-two. And, I'm sorry. So at this time, committee members, we are going to hold Bill number twenty two dash zero zero nine nine R. And I'm going, we're going to reschedule this for another date, and that will possibly be announced at the next council meeting, if possible. Okay. So, that one's on hold and will be rescheduled. And I do want to recognize, we now have present with us, Councilmember Mark Conway of the Fourth District and member of the committee. It wasn't ever even posted on the legislative. So moving on to the next bill, number twenty two dash oh one nine seven, which is RPP Area Thirty One Towns at the Terrances revisions for the purpose of modifying the hours of applicable parking restrictions for residential parking plan Area Thirty One Towns at the Terrances, reducing the non-permit parking time threshold, establishing an exception to the applicable permit limit, and correcting and conforming related provisions. This bill was introduced on February twenty second, twenty twenty-two. The bill sponsor was Councilmember Costello. And the committee will now hear agency reports. And we'll start with the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Christmas Age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is not opposed.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, we stand by our bill report. No objection.
Thank you. That was Liam Davis. And City Solicitor's Office.
Excuse me. Our report says defer to Parking Authority. My apologies.
Okay. So as a matter of record, Department of Transportation deferred to the Parking Authority, which they're not in opposition. City Solicitor.
Madam Chair, Natasha May for the Mayor's Office, reporting that the City Solicitor submitted a report approving the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. Planning Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Martin French for the Planning Department. The Department has no objection to this bill and defers to the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Mr. French. And the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. There's no amendments to this bill. And do I get a motion to move the bill? So moved by Councilmember Stokes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bullock. Sorry, my pen ran out of ink. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Bullock.
Yes.
Yes. Member Conway.
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Dorsey. Member Glover is absent. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Is a yes. Member Stokes.
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And our last bill for today, Bill number twenty two dash oh two oh two, Residential Permit Parking Program, Fells Point area amendment for the purpose of amending the boundaries of the Fells Point area residential parking permit program, revising area parking restrictions, creating new program eligibility standards, and generally relating to the Fells Point area residential permit parking program. This bill was introduced on March seventh, twenty twenty-two. The bill sponsor is Councilman Cohen. And then we'll move on and now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arco Sam from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, similar to the last bill, we defer to the Parking Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. City Solicitor.
Madam Chair, Natasha May, on behalf of the Mayor's Office, reporting that the City Solicitor's Office submitted a report approving the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shannon Conway, on behalf of BPD, we stand by our report and have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. And Department of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Department has no objection to this bill and defers to the Parking Authority.
Thank you. And the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report and defer to the Parking Authority.
Thank you. And there are no amendments to consider on this bill.
I probably would like to submit an amendment, Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey, I didn't understand what you said.
I would probably like to submit an amendment and probably have some questions for agencies first.
Uh, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm concerned about the implications of kind of nonpositions on the kind of, the, on certain provisions in this bill. I certainly don't have the privilege of representing any district that attracts the kind of social life that this area does. But with that said, you know, I think that certain parts of the city are of such immense value to the city as a whole that they bear consideration in light of the, the bigger picture beyond just the immediate block or two or immediate community. There is, I mean, for example, harbor places of such immense impact to the city and the downtown areas of such immense impact to the city that I feel, you know, we'd all be negligent in our duties if we didn't take some level of interest in the outcomes there in those areas. With that said, I, I just can't understand agencies taking kind of a nonposition on the prospect of economic and community development when we're essentially selling city streets to people for pennies. You can park, I mean, if you were gonna park your car in a private parking garage, it might cost you a hundred, two hundred, maybe even two hundred fifty dollars per month to park your private vehicle in an off-street private parking facility. And yet, with Section Two of this bill, we're essentially selling exclusive access to these city streets from five P. M. to seven A. M., fourteen hours a day, exclusive access, seven days a week, for twenty dollars a year. That just doesn't make any sense if we want to maintain this area as accessible, as a valuable asset for people from all around the city. That's a significant area to say you, you're not allowed to come in there and use this publicly owned asset, and I'm not at all okay. And I, I wonder what, what the community development analysis was on this from DHCD, if any.
Hi, Stephanie Murdock, again from DHCD. I was able to speak with the sponsor's office about the development of this legislation, and I was informed that it was done with the support of the community associations. DHCD is not always referred, RPP legislation, as you saw, we were not referred the last bill that was just before us. So we typically do refer to the Parking Authority in our analysis and things that occur in the public right-of-way. We also look to the Department of Transportation for their input. So that is the extent of prep I did around this.
Great, thank you. I mean, it sounds like the consideration is limited to the input of the people who benefit from these restrictions, benefit from the exclusivity that this creates. If I could ask the same question of DOT, what is the transportation analysis that says that it makes sense from a city and community and transportation analysis beyond the private interests of the people that benefit from this exclusivity? So I'll say generally, Councilman? If you could pull that up.
Sure. So.
Before you respond, I just, I guess, just would like to share that if you really, Councilman Dorsey, I guess if you really want to express your feelings, I guess, about the residential parking permit program in general, that's, I think that's something that we should probably do as a separate thing, not based on this one bill. But go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I can respond to that. I mean, I raised these same concerns the last time a bill came before the council that created an exclusive right for immediate residents on the Greenway and Charles Street blocks in the Charles Village neighborhood where, where a small number of people were gaining exclusive right to park and use the public right-of-way.
And I'm not going to dispute that. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. And just, just to give some context here of where DOT fits into RPP, and then I want to give like a broader picture of Fells Point and in general. So with RPP, it's actually managed by the Parking Authority. DOT is a supporting agency, so we'll do logistics in terms of creating the signs, installing the signs, working with Parking Authority to execute those. But these are very drawn-out, lengthy negotiations that are done on the local level with the council person and the numerous community organizations in Fells Point. When I say numerous, I can count almost ten community organizations in Fells Point. You got Fells Point Residents Association, you got Fells Point Community Organization, you have, you know, the Preservation Society, the Main Street. Everyone comes together, and it's, it's often extremely contentious in Fells Point on, on a lot of issues. So the fact that there's legislation in here that the councilman was able to execute with the support of the community, generally, it is, you know, the position of DOT to kind of honor that negotiations that happen on the local level. If there's a desire for us to prod more into this, these types of bills, it could start a precedent where we're kind of slowing down this process across the city. So I just wanted to, everyone to be mindful of that. But in addition to your concerns about public right-of-way being cordoned off for private interests, you know, alternatively, we have our outdoor dining, emergency outdoor dining program, and that is also giving out public right-of-way, but for pedestrian promoting causes. And we're actively working to create a permanent outdoor dining policy that would make those outdoor dining parklets permanent. We're navigating this in areas like Fells Point where RPP is present, but we also have parking meters and areas that aren't really specified. So I just want to stress, it's complicated. There's more than just RPP going on here. There are pedestrian promotion type of policies underway. And Fells Point is really ground zero when we talk about outdoor dining, the parklet program, and RPP. And I know Councilman Cohen's not here, but I'm sure Councilman Costello and some of our other council members who have RPP. I'm wondering, Councilman Bullock, you might have some in Pig Town. So I think it's just a unique situation that has to be carefully looked at locally. So I think it's just a unique situation that has to be carefully looked at locally. So those are my comments. I'm able to address any other questions.
Thank you. And just as a matter of note, Councilman Cohen would have sent me a note, would have been here, but he's home with a sick child.
Okay.
And also, a member of the committee, Councilman Glover is also excused because of a, something that's going on at home, an emergency with him as well. But I do, Councilmember Bullock has been waiting to respond.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And just want to say, I am sensitive to the comments made by Councilman Dorsey. I also don't have a district where we have a lot of the activity that you might see in Fells Point. But to your point, Liam, and also Madam Chair, the last RPP bill that was put in by Costello, that's in the Poppleton neighborhood, and so it's right at the edge of 9th District, but it's in the 11th. And what I can say, in that particular case, and this may have something to do also with the bill we're looking at right now, it winds up being a challenge, at least in the case of Poppleton, for a lot of seniors who live in a neighborhood. And so it makes it difficult, you know, for them to park and so trying to have that space, you know, carved out for them. I think there is something you say in terms of access. I definitely hear what you're saying in terms of access to these public spaces. And at the same time, folks who may live in the community also having that difficulty in terms of parking. So we do have to kind of, you know, get that happy medium there. But I think it is worth having a larger discussion around RPP and what that really means. So just want to lift that up. No, thank you.
Yeah, this is definitely warrants, you know, eventually discussion on a broader issue because our, we are a city with aging infrastructure. We have a large amount, a large number of older adults in our communities. We have areas that provide a number of services that does not have ample parking. I mean, we could go on and on. And, but at this point, I'm ready to move, take a motion to move the bill.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was kind of, I had a couple other.
You have one last comment on this subject, please, so we can move on with this particular bill.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like there's an assumption that this is acceptable instead of an assumption that it's not acceptable to just sell off private right of access to public streets. I mean, if we're talking about the right to stand on a street, it's a public right-of-way. What if I had to pay to be able to stand on a public street unless I live, you know, what if I, what if I was barred from standing on a public street unless I paid $20 a year because, to be allowed to do that because I happen to live on that block?
Councilman Dorsey?
I'm sorry, no, I'm, I just, I think it's a really, really bad assumption to think that it's, it's okay to prohibit people from coming into and having access, equal access to neighborhoods. I'm offering an amendment to strike Section 2 of this bill. And I'll move that amendment.
Hearing no second, we're ready to move the bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill? Before I do that, I, are there any, we don't have anyone signed up for public testimony, but I see your hand raiser.
I'm here on behalf of Councilmember Cohen. I'm his chief of staff.
Oh, you got to come to the mic.
Thank you.
Say who you are.
My name is Maggie Master and I am Councilmember Cohen's chief of staff.
Okay.
And again, as you already mentioned, he sends his regrets. And the only thing I wanted to add, which I don't, I don't think was already enumerated, was just that part of this really year-long process of partnership between the Residents' Association and the Main Street Businesses Association was also the creation of multiple ride-share spots, working with the Parking Authority. It is not in this bill because it is actually not part of an RPP process, but there are going to be multiple ride-share spots.
So just, which bill are you talking about? This is the Fells Point bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so just as, as part of the, part of the ongoing conversation, and I think one thing to really lift up here is that while it is not reflected in the, in the bill, because that is not where the ride-shares live, one thing that is coming out of this is ensuring that there are increased spaces where all people can come and access, knowing that increasingly we are trying to get people away from bringing their cars into congested areas, that this is actually a move toward hopefully creating a better thoroughfare into Fells Point, into a very already congested area, and also ensuring that we are helping people to really think about ride-shares as a means of coming to see some of our kind of most appreciated spaces rather than bringing their cars to park kind of on a one-person basis.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a motion to move this bill?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Bullock.
Sir.
Second by Councilmember Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Member Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Member Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Member Dorsey?
Madam Chair, before I cast my vote, I'll just make clear, you know, I think parking on streets is a terrible, awful thing. I think we shouldn't allow it anywhere. You know, I think that we should be a better city than that in a way. So I'm not here to make some great stand for availability and like a right to park on public streets. Like, cars are awful. Cars are the worst. And I want, I want to make clear that my point is that in principle, it's an absolutely inequitable proposition to say that we are essentially leasing exclusivity of right of access to publicly owned space. It is my constituents who own that street as much as anybody else, and we are letting other people pay to exclude my constituents from access to that public space that they own. And on that principle, I absolutely cannot support this bill. Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey is a nay. Councilman Glover is absent. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Member Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will move to second reader. And that is all of the bills being heard today. I want to thank everyone for attending today's hearing. This meeting is adjourned. Have a nice day.